Call them in to order. Councilperson, I have some agenda adjustments. We had a item listed as nine, the previously that was to consider recommendation to award an RFQ 2025-02 for Highway 52 sludge, de-watering facility project. We are going to pull that from the agenda and consider that at a later time. We're also going to delete item eight N, and then we're going to do amendment to item number eight U, and I'll tell you what that is when we bring it up. And also add a real estate section to our closed session. Motion by Councilmember Townsend to approve. Second by Councilmember Whitley for the discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Starting on approval of minutes, approval of minutes for the Monday, May 19, 2025 regular session as amended. Monday, May, June 2, 2025 regular session. Monday, June 2, 2025 closed session for consult with attorney and personnel. Wednesday, June 4, 2025 regular recess session. And Wednesday, June 4, 2025 closed session from personnel, which was recessed from the June 2, 2025 closed session.
Move approval.
Session by Councilmember Aldridge. Second by Councilmember Dry for the discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. On number four, special request. We have a request from the Office of the State Fire Marshal. Brian Taylor is here.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, for the opportunity to come before you today to speak to you. Before I get into the requests for the waiver fee, I would like to give you an update on our state emergency training facility here at Stanley County Airport. I have with me also today Jeff Bradford, which is our facilities manager hired locally. We have currently hired four individuals and looking at hiring four more in the next couple of months. We have just completed part of the facility, and we hope to be done with Phase One by September. This is an $87 million project. A lot of people ask why Stanley County, especially going across the state, they say it's your home, but the truth to be known is, is the Air National Guard has been training individuals from all over the country for over 20 years in urban search and rescue. And I felt like being from here, it was a natural fit. One of my top three priorities when I went to Raleigh was to build a state emergency training facility for specialized fire rescue operations. Right now, we're having to send our first responders out of state, and it's very costly for our urban search and rescue, our water rescue, our RF simulator. We were sending firefighters that protect airports to South Carolina at $1,000 a person for their annual certifications. And I thought that it was our responsibility in the state of North Carolina to train those folks and keep them here at the lowest cost possible. So I started this venture about seven years ago. We signed this partnership with the North Carolina National Guard, rightfully because they were providing the training here at Stanley County Airport. And we started asking for federal money. And we kept hitting roadblocks, especially when the money, and at time Congressman Hudson was allowing us to go, and he was looking at appropriating money. He came here, seen the need for it. But when the money got to the Pentagon, it was like they had their own ideas and priorities. So after COVID, North Carolina was sitting pretty good, and I was told that you ought to build you a package and ask the legislature. So I built what they called the Yellow Book in Raleigh. And that was this proposal to build this facility here in Stanley County. Phase One was a $25 million ask, is either two-part, $25 million to build the water rescue facility and/or 3.5 to build, buy the property and put in the infrastructure and continue asking for money. I got both. I was very fortunate to get both originally, and today we are at $87 million investment in this, and this is just the start of it. So I'm very proud of this facility. Our Phase One that you will see here, and I believe they were going to blow it up on the screen for you, is that possible? Can't do that? Okay, that's fine. So what you're seeing here on the board is Phase One, the water rescue facility. This, there is a sister facility in Ariskin in New York. What makes this one different and unique than any other in the country is that we'll be able to put motorized boats in this facility. So we are or were able to do water rescue training in Bridgewater, which is in Burke, McDowell County area. And because of Helene, of course, that, that area's been damaged so much, Duke Energy's not going to allow us to do any more training there. But the idea was, is we weren't in a controlled atmosphere, and we've had incidences where we were going to get people hurt. By having this facility here, it's a controlled environment, there's nothing like it in the country to put motorized boats in. And as we have seen here, just in Albemarle alone, the last couple of months, the fire department has responded with their water rescue equipment here in town for urban water rescue. But over the years, after Matthew and Helene, everybody went and asked for boats, grants on boats, but we were not properly trained on them. So this was a priority to build a facility to get our folks, our first responders, properly trained in swift water. And we're very proud of this, and this will be done in September. What we have completed now is the water, the aircraft rescue, that is completed, and we will start training. We did some training so far, but it is live now as of today. And we're pulling in folks from around the state for their FAA annual certifications. And in this partnership as well, we'll be working with the community college, they'll come in, register these folks. And they, they were not originally in the partnership, but we are working closely with the president about doing a burn facility, because my agreement with the state community college system is that we would not take any of what, what we call their bread and butter firefighter one and two courses from them at this facility, because that was one of the reasons we haven't got a training facility to this point, because the 58 community colleges around the state was concerned how that would affect them. These are courses and classes that they cannot afford or logistically put on, is what we were hosting here. And of course, the local fire department, the local college will be able to have full access to this facility when it's not being used by our office and/or the North Carolina National Guard. So from that, we have broke ground in the prime power park, and we have worked closely with your staff here to be able to utilize the generation there for continuous power. And then, of course, working with the power utilities that it takes to run these pumps here. So the staff has been great to work with to be able to get that up and operational. You also have a handout talking about the facility. It's a breakdown. I'm not going to go over that sheet for you, but that's just some facts about the facility. I'll be glad to answer any of those questions for you. Feel free to give me a call anytime, and I will also give an invitation individually or as a group at any time to come out and take a tour of the facility in the future. So at this time, we are, like I said, we are working with the water rescue facility to get it up and operational. It's supposed to be complete in September. The contractors have asked us that, that we need to start filling it with water. It holds five million gallons of water, and I would like to approach this board to see if they would consider waiving the fee for the first five million gallons of water to get it up and operational, to get our pumps where they need to be. And of course, we will go live in September. And of course, as we all know, we'll continue filling that from that point on. But we're only looking at the waiver for the first initial upfront five billion gallons to get this up and operational. I entertain any questions you may have at this time.
Council have any questions?
It's, if you haven't been out there, you ought to go. It's an amazing site once you pass the Air National Guard. It seems like, David and I were just talking, it just runs from there all the way out to Bayton Road, it seems. So it's, it's a massive facility, and what you've done to bring it to Stanley County and Albemarle is greatly appreciated, and just look forward to see continued growth out there.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we approve it.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge to approve the request.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dry for the discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you for what you're doing. We look forward to getting it operational.
Thank you, and look forward for your visit. Thank you.
Yep.
Next, I'll move to 5A public hearings. Zoning map amendment 25-01 for 936 North Fifth Street. Staff, will you introduce? This is a change of zoning from R10 general residential to hospital medical center district.
Here we have a request for a rezoning of the parcel associated with the address of 936 North Fifth Street, currently zoned as R10. The request is to rezone the parcel hospital medical. The existing land use is single-family residential. The proposed land use requiring the rezoning is counseling, administrative offices, overnight foster care, and family outreach. The site has utilities, water, sewer, and power are already on site. The sopography is very level, and the parcel is developed with a home and outbuildings. The parcel is not located in regulated floodplain, watershed, or other site constraints. The applicant is Faith Alive Ministries. They are requesting the rezoning as they feel they need to change the zoning to use the home to, to change it into a mixed-use space that functions as both administrative hub and a resource center for the community. This is just a picture of the house. So most of you are familiar with R10, so I won't go into what that is. Hospital medical is related to our hospital district. Right across the street is Atrium Health, so everything across the street is zoned hospital medical. So it would be an extension of the existing zoning across the street. So to the north, we have single-family residential and some medical offices. To the east, we have single-family residential. To the south, we have single-family residential. And to the west is that existing hospital medical use. On the future land use map, the parcel is denoted as general residential, and the star is actually moved, it's down here in the orange. Staff prepared comments. The property is currently zoned R10, and is a small half-track acre currently occupying a single-family home. The area is a mix of single-family homes, duplexes, and medical offices. While the future land use map denotes it as general residential, which allows for medium residence with some limited adjacent uses. With prioritizing medical offices, independent and assisted living and similar uses, the rezoning to hospital medical would not have much impact on the area. Much of the block immediately adjacent to the hospital features a mix of homes and some offices already. The size of the property and the scale of the existing structure and use are permitted in hospital medical. Are lower density and scale and in keeping with the character of the area. Staff believes there are merits to this request, requested rezoning, and find it generally in consensus with the future land use map. Planning, planning and zoning board recommended for approval with consistency statement based on the staff analysis and staff report.
Have questions for staff? Were you at the planning zone?
I was.
How many showed up to speak?
No. The applicant showed up to speak, and one person spoke in support of it. We didn't have any people show up at planning and zoning to speak against it.
Council have any further questions for staff?
You said planning and zoning did recommend approval.
They did.
I couldn't find that in here. Was that in our?
Um.
Yeah, that's right.
I don't believe it was.
I don't think it was. I don't think it was in here.
Staff believes there are merits.
Was it unanimous?
It was unanimous. I may have forgot to update this to include that.
That's fine. I figured I overlooked.
Further question? Thank you, staff. Stay close. This is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak may do so. I have some signed up already. Ms. Wyancoff, are you wanting to speak on this, or is this a totally different topic that you're wanting to speak on? Okay, come forward then. Bonnie Wyancoff, 933 North Sixth Street.
I've lived at this intersection of Sixth Street and Avondale for 40 years. My problem with this is the site, you're going to house children there. It's directly across from the entrance to the Levine Cancer Center, the community care clinic, the wound clinic, Sanger Medical, the entrance to the ER, the entrance for visitors to the hospital. There's no sidewalk. It's just a busy, busy intersection there. Goshen Medical is two lots down. So there are a lot of people coming and going and coming and going at that site, and you're going to house children there. There's no sidewalk, and there's a swimming pool next door. I don't think the site's appropriate for children to be housed overnight.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bonnie.
Sharon Hazlett, 930 North Sixth Street.
I come before you as a resident of the neighborhood and having some concerns about it being rezoned medical. And I have, I secured a list of what that means potentially, what it could be. I also come as with experience. I was sitting there thinking, 10 years ago this month, I applied to be trained as a Guardian Adlitem volunteer. And so for 10 years, I have worked with DSS, the social workers, but especially the children who we're talking about tonight, having a place to go when there aren't enough foster parents, there aren't enough placements for the children. And in fact, I have worked with children who have had to stay at DSS because there was no immediate placement for them. So I come with a heart for the children. My job as a Guardian Adlitem is to be the voice of the child. And I find myself here, you know, thinking Guardian Adlitem, but I'm also thinking as a neighbor and what that could potentially mean. I would like to think at some point, we would have enough people in Stanley County to step up to be foster parents, because ideally to go, if they, if a child has to leave their home, they need to go straight to the home where they will be for a while and have that security. And I would love to think that we could, as a community, as a county, come together and have enough foster care provided. But, and if we did have that, then there might not be that particular need for this home. We see that it's a former neighbor. We see that as part of the neighborhood at home, and we cannot help but wonder, you know, what would happen if they no longer needed this for the children who are, who are taken into foster care? If you look at what this medical center district describes it could be, that's very concerning to us, what our community might be changed to, what might happened, happen in our neighborhood. So there are those concerns. Ms. Wyancoff spoke, and she was concerned about the safety. I cannot tell you. Well, it's weekly. We don't, my husband and I don't always get to sit on the front porch in the porch swing and watch whatever's going on on North Sixth Street, but it is... Oh. I didn't realize I was limited.
Wrap it up. Your time, your time's over, but wrap it up real quickly.
Okay, real quickly. So we have that concern. Then the Guardian Adlitem and me is concerned about the children. Living where we do, the helicopter goes over, it shakes our windows, it rattles our house at times. It depends on which way it has to come in. I guess that has to do with the weather. But there are lots of sirens, police cars, ambulances. These children have been exposed, they've been exposed to a lot of trauma, and I'm concerned about the trauma that might cause. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Harrison, 401 Avondale Avenue.
Mayor, did we warn everybody about the time limit?
They signed the paper that there would be three minutes, but they're just reminding everybody it's a three-minute time.
Yes. Good evening. So as a member of the neighborhood, most of us didn't receive any information about this hearing or anything else. So I found out about it from a neighbor this morning. Haven't had time to really do a lot of research, but I do have some concerns. I'm concerned about the kids, and I know that they need a place to live, and that is also, as it was for, for Sharon Hazlett, very heavy on my heart. But I'm also concerned about our neighborhood. We have a very close-knit neighborhood, and I don't know anything about this organization that's moving in. It's obviously a religious organization, but from the title of it, it doesn't look like it's associated with one of the main line denominations. And I know, so it could just go up and, you know, is it going to fail? How, how are their financials? Are they going to bring a religious aspect to the neighborhood and force it on the neighborhood? So I'm a little concerned about that future. I'm also concerned about what precedent this sets. Is this going to bring in more of this kind of rezoning? And how are the, how well are they going to integrate into our neighborhood as it is now and continue to improve it and make it a safe and fun place to live? We do have a very good neighborhood as it stands now. So those are my main concerns, and I hope you will consider them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brittany, is the applicant here to speak? I do have this signed up.
Yes, I...
Does she wish to speak?
Yes, she definitely wishes to speak.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and city staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My name is Jordan Whitley, and I serve as the Executive Director of Faith Alive Ministries. We are a faith-based nonprofit organization rooted here in Stanley County. Our mission is grounded in James 1:27 to care for orphans and widows in their distress. Our mission is grounded in James 1:27 to care for orphans and widows in their distress and every day we work to meet both the physical and spiritual needs of orphans, widows, and the broken-hearted in our community. I'm here tonight to speak in support of our rezoning request for 936 North Fifth Street, a property we are currently under contract to purchase with a scheduled closing date of July 11th pending your approval. Our hope is to see this home transformed into a place of restoration, dignity, and practical support for vulnerable children and families. If approved, the property would serve two primary purposes. First, it will function as a daytime office space for our small staff of four employees. This provides a much-needed base of operations for coordinating our outreach programs, organizing support for foster and kinship families, and continuing our ongoing work with widows, offering things like meal delivery, home repairs, and connection opportunities. Second, and most urgently, the home would serve as a temporary overnight refuge for children entering foster care. Right now, because of a nationwide shortage of foster families, children who are removed from their homes in crisis often sleep on air mattresses and DSS offices while waiting for placement. I would like to also say that we agree with Ms. Hazlett that there is a need for foster families. Our ministry is not just trying to put a Band-Aid on this problem. This year alone, we've worked with Baptist Children's Home to get four families licensed in our area, so we are trying to create more foster homes. With the space on Fifth Street, we can offer these children a warm bed and a peaceful home-like environment as their caseworker identifies a foster family or a more permanent placement. This is not a group home, it is not a long-term residence. It is a safe landing place in moments of deep trauma and transition because removing a child from the home that they've always known, regardless of what that environment is, is traumatic enough. Imagine being a scared child who is then forced to sleep on an office building floor on an air mattress. One child this year has spent over fifty nights at DSS. We expect minimal traffic to and from the home, primarily limited to our staff during weekday hours, and yes, an occasional DSS worker who is bringing a child in the evening hours. We are committed to being a good neighbor and stewarding the space with respect and care. At Faith the Live Ministries, we believe that every child deserves to feel safe and every widow deserves to feel seen. This home will allow us to extend that care in a more personal and impactful way right here in the community that we love and serve. We respectfully ask for your support in making this vision a reality and I'm glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Staff have any questions of the applicant?
Just one question. So would someone, you mentioned the temporary housing for children, things of that nature, so I'm guessing, would that be on a, is someone gonna be at this home twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, or is that just as needed or what?
Our staff would be there from eight to four, Monday through Thursday, that's our current office hours. DSS staffs, county employees to stay with those children. My understanding and DSS is represented here tonight is that two staff members or a volunteer and a staff member, so two adults are always present with the child that would be staying overnight at the home when it's needed. Yes, sir?
Brittany, you may have to answer this. You say it's not a group home, but it sounds like one. What's the difference?
Well, by definition, it's not a group home because people are not living there. What she is explaining is that one child, as I understand it, there's only one bedroom. There's gonna be one bedroom. One child will come with a DSS worker and a volunteer and potentially stay one night, maybe two. It is never the goal to have more than one child there at a time, it's not the goal to consistently have one child there. It is not a group home, there's not multiple individuals living there and receiving services there. It is a ad hoc, as-needed sleeping temporary arrangement.
How many, on an average day you projected, how many people would be coming and going during an eight to four day?
Uh, there's one day a week where all four office members are present, but two of us are part-time, two are full-time, so on average, you're looking at two to three office members that are staffed there.
Do your ministry operate any of these homes anywhere else in Stanley County?
We do not, no, sir. That's why the need is there, because right now, they're stuck at DSS offices.
Where is your ministry?
Right now, we lease an office space that is right beside the new State Employees Credit Union over on the bypass. Across from the apartment buildings, very small space, but it works for our staff, but it definitely doesn't accommodate kids that are in need of a bed to sleep in a home environment at night.
Any further questions?
So in the event that a DSS worker has to remove a child from their home for, you know, safety reasons or whatnot, do they, do they always come to your facility or are there multiple facilities in the county that they can, multiple options they can go to?
No, the option right now is DSS offices.
So if they don't take them to the DSS option, they're coming to you?
Or a foster placement. I mean, ideally, when a child comes into care, and Dolly, please correct me if I'm speaking out of turn, when a child comes into care, the goal is for them to go to a foster home, but the entire nation has a shortage of foster families right now. Over seventy-seven kids in care, twenty-eight foster families in this area, so the math just doesn't add up. There's not enough homes for these children to go to.
Further questions?
This is a partnership with DSS, correct?
Uh, that's what I'm hearing. Does DSS wish to come up and clarify?
It's not a group home placement, it's not going through the typical licensure-type process that a group home placement requires. It is a temporary stopgap measure so that kids don't have to sleep on the floor in our office. So it's not intended for it to be a long-term plan for any child, it's not intended for it to be a multi-week-long, multi-week-type placement, it's just supposed to be a temporary stopgap measure so that children don't have to sleep in DSS office.
Dolly, stop right there and give her your name and address so she has it.
Uh, you know, as far as partnership, I just wanted to clarify, we try to support DSS in a number of ways. We've done things by, you know, taking items for their staff to show appreciation. When kids have been staying there, we'll take meals or gift cards to provide for those meals. So there are ways that we've partnered with DSS, but we are not affiliated with DSS. We don't receive any federal funding, state funding, we are a nonprofit organization.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Further questions? This is a public hearing, anyone else who cares to speak for or against, please come
Most enclosed public hearing.
First, my councilor Townsend, a closed public hearing. Second, councilmember Aldridge, further discussion?
I wanna, I wanna make sure I understand what this is. I feel for the neighbors and I feel for the cause and it's tough for me to decide really how to vote on this, but if I understand it, there will, it is an office space during the day, which tells me there would be no traffic in and out. And then in the evening, there might be one, at most two children come in to occupy one bedroom with the DSS representative with them. Is that all there is?
Okay. Uh, we're not gonna take any action tonight and I'll tell you why. The advertisement was incorrect in the paper, so unfortunately, this process has to start over. There will be no action tonight on this. I apologize. I just now saw, when the manager brought it to me, that it was advertised incorrectly, so somebody else mentioned earlier, they had not heard about it. So this will start over, there'll be no action taken tonight. Mayor?
When will, at the next meeting or will it be?
They have to start a complete process over with the advertisement period and it'll go back before planning and zoning before it comes up.
Man, I asked what was there, I see the date.
936 Yackin, it's nine thirty-six North Fifth. That's correct.
But because that was, now there, we're not gonna charge them another fee, correct?
No, we will not charge another fee. This is our area, so it will go back through the process again. I apologize.
So do I need to withdraw my motion to close the public hearing?
Yes, we're gonna stop it now, yes. You get that? He's withdrawn his motion to close the public hearing? Okay, we'll move on to the second public hearing. Zoning map amendment 2502, 126 acres on Weldon Avenue, request for zoning map amendment. This is for tax parcels 2402, 22316, and 891 on Weldon Avenue for an unimproved right-of-way to chain zoning from R-10 general residential to R-8 neighborhood residential.
So this is a request to rezone approximately 1.26 acres on Weldon Avenue, Weldon Street, which is an unimproved right-of-way within the city. It combines three lots noted here in the center, all owned by the same owner. These three lots would be the only lots to use Weldon Street to access their parcels, the other to actually use South Broom and Harwood. The current zoning is R-10, the proposed zoning is R-8. The land use is the same, the parcels are currently vacant. The proposed use would be for single-family residential. The applicant is just wishing to increase the density to make it more feasible to finish the unimproved right-of-way for the accessible homes that would go in there. Sewer is located in the right-of-way adjacent to the lots. Water and power is available on South Broom. Topography is moderately sloping but is developable. The parcel is vacant and wooded. It is not located in a regulated floodplain, watershed, or any other site constrictions. This is a picture of the lot from South Broom coming onto the unimproved right-of-way. So the surrounding zoning of the lot is R-10 and R-10 is the pale we see here. At the corner, we have R-8 existing, which is the bright yellow, and across the street, we have light industrial.
Brittany, tell, explain exactly what's the difference between R-10 and R-8?
Um, smaller lot sizes, so in R-10, you have to have ten thousand square feet per lot and in R-8, you have to have...
Four houses per lot. That's forty thousand square feet is an acre.
That's an acre, not lot.
Yeah.
You're talking about acre, not lot.
But you could have four lots per acre.
Per acre, but we're talking about, she's talking about lots tonight.
Yeah, there's three lots that come to about an acre and a quarter. So in R-10, you could only get roughly four, maybe five houses depending on a survey. Moving to R-8, you're potentially getting up to five or six homes and because the applicant would have to pave the road and bring utilities into the street, he's hoping that the increased density will make it more feasible.
So you're, right now, there's, could be five lots, fifty-four thousand square foot, I believe, already. So there could be five lots there. If we go to R-8, it could be six.
So that's six houses per acre.
No, that's over an acre.
It's over.
Fifty-four thousand square foot is what we're dealing with.
Go back over again what the surrounding is. You did that a month there.
Yeah, so the surrounding is R-10, that's this light pale yellow or beige. At the adjacent, on the corner of Harwood, we have R-8 and that's the request that the applicant is asking to rezone the parcels. And then across the street, we have light industrial and the light gray. We've gone over what R-10 and R-8 are. There's really not much impact on the future land use map. The future land use map has these parcels as neighborhood residential, which would be areas located in the city with mature neighborhoods, access to public utilities, roads, and suitable for infill development. Staff comments are, the subject properties currently zoned R-10 make up a small portion of 1.26 acres, are currently undeveloped and unimproved on the right-of-way. The area is a mix of single-family homes in R-10 and R-8 on a small scale with little industrial manufacturing uses across the road. The future land use map designates the parcel as neighborhood residential, which is the most dense designation that is primarily residential and allows for a mix of housing types and densities. These properties are immediately adjacent to R-8 properties to the west and are the only parcels which will access the Weldon Street right-of-way. It was the intent of these properties to be developed as residential homes, however, without a street being completed, that has been prohibitive. Rezoning to R-8 would likely provide the density needed to complete the street, provide additional infill housing, and likely some additional opportunities for redevelopment of the new development or adjacent properties in the future. Staff believes that there are merits to this rezoning request and finds it to be generally consistent with the future land use map. Planning board did decide unanimously to recommend approval with the consistency and reasonable in this statement based on the report produced by staff.
Council have any questions of staff?
Just for clarification, where the rezoning sign is, is it the property, when you're looking at that sign, property to the left or to the right?
This sign?
Yes.
So it would be down to the left. So this is coming off South Broom, so you'd have to come down Weldon and it'd be sort of the back end of that parcel, all the way coming into the back end of the parcel that affronts Harwood, that middle portion. We couldn't put the sign there because since it's unimproved right-of-way, nobody would drive by to see it.
Actually behind the house that you're seeing in the picture?
Yeah.
Also, is this the one that has the deserted building sitting on it?
The rezoning request is not for that parcel, it's adjacent to that parcel.
Brittany, I do have a question. You put, says staff believes there are merits to this request of rezoning and find it to be generally consistent. What, what does that mean, generally consistent?
Yeah, it's what, this was, it's what we always say.
It's flexible, you got one side that's R-8, the other side's R-10, so it is consistent, you could do it either way.
Because the neighborhood, so in the future land use map, we don't use our zoning names, we use neighborhood district. So it's generally consistent because R-10 fits in neighborhood residential and R-8 does as well. It's a matter of the density of the desired neighborhood, if that makes sense, so it's, the future land use map is meant to be broad enough to allow for multiple zoning uses, but narrow enough to sort of narrow it down. We want to see this, we don't want to see that.
Further questions? Is there an applicant here to speak that wishes to speak?
No.
Looks like he lives in Texas. That's correct.
This is a public hearing, anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward. Give your name and address.
My name is Joe Brooks, I live at 802 Lafayette Street in Huron, Alabama. I had not planned to speak tonight, but I, after hearing what was going on, I needed to ask some questions more than anything, I want some clarification. I have the property right next to that, it's light industrial. And this property that they're talking about rezoning is just directly across from where my business is. And the neighborhood is a fairly well-kept neighborhood with nice spaced housing and so forth. I'm concerned about the density that we're talking about putting houses in this area and I, and I just don't know what that's gonna do to my property values. This is directly across from me, but I have not seen any plans, I don't know what he's thinking about doing.
We will not see plans either, it's just a zoning question to us.
But it does concern me, that's really all I have to say.
Thank you.
Joe, what, the way your building sits is on the south side and the development would be directly across from your property line.
Right.
With regard, I don't, I don't know, planning or what, with regard to your property line and what's being discussed here, how, what's the footage between, between the two? Any idea on that, planning?
I couldn't answer that.
Yeah, anybody on?
I think you saw in the diagram, there'd be a forty-foot right-of-way through there.
Okay.
Yeah.
That would be what separates the two property lines.
I think that's the separation, is that right-of-way.
Coming off your driveway, then it's back more into the... Coming off your driveway, then it's back more into the, uh, vacant area.
It's, uh, South Broom Street is, is the connecting. I mean, that's, that's what's going to be shared.
Yeah, I was, I went by there yesterday to take a look at it and, uh, um, just clarifying things for people who may not have an idea of what's going on over there and where it is. Thank you.
That's not a very large area that they're, that they're planning on putting some houses in. If they can put six houses in there, I'm just concerned about that density and what it's going to do to the rest of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak for or against? Hearing that, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Staff, will you come up and put up the consistency, inconsistency statements?
Mayor also says this was properly advertised. The last one, there was an error in the actual advertisement as far as the actual location, but this is properly advertised.
Back, back down just a little bit. Staff, you see the statement of consistency, statement of inconsistency, statement of future land use map amendment. Your choice.
Make a motion to approve the zoning request with a consistency statement.
Have a motion by Councilmember Whitley to approve with the statement of consistency and reasonableness. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Townsend. Further discussion.
Could we add some specification to the, um, approval, so statement for consistence, um, approval with consistency statement based on, um, based on the future land use map, based on staff report, just for clarity?
Let's say based on staff's report that it's consistent with land use plan.
Thank you.
Further comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
No.
Motion fails forward to two. Now, you still have not resolved it. Do you, anybody going to make a statement of consist, inconsistency, or a statement of future land use map? So far, you've only done is turn down the statement of consistency.
Inconsistency.
Then a motion-
Yes, if that's agreeable.
Motion by Councilmember Dry to, uh, disapprove with the statement of inconsistency and unreasonableness.
Mayor-
So we have to be more specific.
Yeah, we need some level of specificity for the denial.
Okay. Dry?
I'm pondering.
Are you denying it, tells you're, you're, uh, think that the density is unreasonable?
Well, that, I don't think it really agree, in my opinion, agrees with the future land use plan. That, these small lots and trying to put so much on there, that's a concern that I have.
But it's adjacent to the same zoning.
You've heard the motion from Councilmember Dry to disapprove the statement of inconsistency and unreasonableness.
I mean, I think we'd better be careful because, like, like Councilmember Whitley just said, it's adjacent to the same zoning, and then also, we, what kind of message are we sending to a unanimous planning board that voted, um, in favor of this?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your-
What, what is the motion?
To deny based on the statement of inconsistency and unreasonableness.
Okay, okay, okay.
Raise your hand if you're in favor of the motion. For those opposed, two. Motion fails. Motion carries of a statement of inconsistency and unreasonableness. The, uh, map amendment and rezoning will not occur. Minister reports are in your agenda. Can anyone have any questions or comments? Moving on to the consent agenda, and it's a rather long one, so bear with me. Uh, eight A, consider road closure for Parcels July fourth parade. Eight B, consider road closure for History Museum's Big Truck Day. Eight C, consider road closures for the annual dinner on Main Event. Eight D, consider adopting Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Eight E, consider approval to partially unseal closed session minutes January twenty-third, January twenty-twenty-three through August twenty-twenty-three. Eight F, consider approval of the annual report of surplus sales. Eight G, resolution twenty-five oh eight, water and sewer assessment rates concerning extension of water and sewage system for the City of Albemarle for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Eight H, resolution twenty-five oh nine, water and sewer rates for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Eight I, resolution twenty-five ten for electric rates for twenty-five, twenty-six. Eight J, resolution twenty-five eleven to approve the salary schedule for fiscal year twenty-two-five, twenty-six. Eight K, resolution twenty-five twelve for adopting solid waste fees. Eight L, resolution twenty-five thirteen, session law twenty-twenty-three, one thirty-four, Appropriations Act directed project. Eight M, resolution twenty-five fourteen, approving installment financing and security agreements with Pinnacle Bank. Eight N, we have pulled in the, uh, adjustments. Eight O, ordinance twenty-five nineteen, amending the annual operating budget. Eight P, ordinance twenty-twenty-five, amending the Highway twenty-four, twenty-seven sidewalk relocation project. Eight Q, ordinance twenty-five twenty-one, amending the operating budget, section eight administrative costs. Eight R, ordinance twenty-five twenty-two, amending the operating budget for public housing conventional fund. Eight S, ordinance twenty-five twenty-three, amending the operating budget health insurance fund. Eight T-
We both-
Eighteen, we would be, we would be pulling?
What, it's-
No, 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 no.
We can leave that one there.
We'll leave that.
Yes.
Eighteen? And it is correct, twenty-five, twenty-four?
Yes, sir. Ordinance twenty-five, twenty-five may need to be amended if you so choose.
Ordinance twenty-five, twenty-four, amending the ball field lights project budget is, is good. Eight U, we need to amend, ordinance twenty-five, twenty-five, amending the operating budget ball field lighting upgrade. It currently says that we are taking it from, uh-
Would be using the amount borrowed-
Borrowed from the, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Interfund loans. This will change that to using the ARPA, unspent ARPA funds.
Yes, sir. That would be paragraph four of the ordinance twenty-five, twenty-five.
Eight U, ordinance, no, no, eight, eight V, excuse me, ordinance twenty-five, twenty-six, amending the operating budget, G A S P lease and subscrib, subscriptions agreement. That's a lot of them. Anyone have any questions or comments before we move forward?
I have one. Uh, we approved the budget at our last meeting. I would have thought these, uh, fees and salary scale and that sort of thing for twenty-five, twenty-six would be in that budget.
No, you have to adopt them separate by, by separate ordinance. That's what we're doing tonight for, to comply with that budget we passed.
I, I agree. I, I see we're doing that. It just doesn't make any sense to me.
I'll entertain a motion.
So I'm moved.
Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
I think that's the most we ever put in a consent agenda.
That's, that is the most I can ever remember. It's budget time of the year. Ten A, appointments to the city boards and commissions. Give me just a moment to get my list. Counsel, we have several boards. We'll start with Albemarle Downtown Development. Albemarle Downtown Development, we have an agreement with them where they make the recommendation and council appoints those, uh, volunteers. This year, they are recommending Kristi Ann Lee, I'm assuming that's Thaun.
Thaun.
Thaun, okay, and Megan King to fill the vacancies.
Move approval, second.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend, second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Parks and Recreation, we have two. We only have one to replace. Excuse me. Larry Direct cannot be reappointed again. He's served his second term. Uh, counsel, you have a couple to choose from. Chris Almond, and all of them have asked for multiple appointments, so you would basically probably only do one. Would council be in agreement to doing Chris Almond? So moved. Motion by Councilmember Dry.
Sir.
Second by Councilmember Whitley. Further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We still need someone from District Three, because that filled District Four. We need someone in District Three. The Walk of Fame, completion of first term, Foster, Parker, and Judy Holcomb would like to be reappointed for another term.
Remove, second.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second by Councilmember Townsend. Further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Moving to planning and zoning, excuse me, let's do Historic Resources first, my fault. Anthony Purnell is not eligible again, so we need to reappoint for another term Laura, Lauren Wagner and John Williams.
I moved. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Uh, Lori, Lori Balkum has completed a partial term and is interested in being appointed for a first term. Move approval. Motion by Councilmember Dry.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Whitley. Further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Now, we need to fill a vacancy. Uh, Daniel Beck is one on your list that has requested. Uh, Brittany Elkin has requested, and the other two, we've already pointed to other positions. Counsel, be okay with Brad, Daniel Beck?
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hunt.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Moving to the planning and zoning board, uh, we have two that have completed partial terms and are willing to be reappointed. That's Tanner Denton and Robert McIntyre.
Move approval.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Also, uh, Aaron Dees wishes to be reappointed.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Dry.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hunt. Further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We have a vacancy for a full-time member, and give me one minute to pull this up, counsel. Typically-
Do we have a partial time?
I believe we only got one.
You only got one option, huh?
Well, counsel typically moves an alternate, the alternate up, but that's up to you whether you want to do that this time or not. I'm trying to find my list of the alternate. Give me a minute.
So there's only one name on the-
There's only one name there. That would be Amber Beck, I believe, if that's correct. Is that what you see?
Here's the ones that are on there.
First term.
Okay, I don't see my list for planning and zoning, but my fault. Planning and zoning. Currently, you have a alternate, Leslie Phillips. Uh, normally, we would have moved her up, but now I noticed that she has been absent. Do you want to move her up to the regular position? Do you want to point somebody new to the-
Mayor, when you say she's been absent, does it give you a, a detailed update of how many meetings she's attended or missed?
Uh, this year, she's missed both May and June, but that's all I have information for.
I, I know she has been ill. I, I, I know that.
Should we move her up or leave her in the-
I would. She's good.
Yeah. Then I need a motion to move Leslie Phillips into the-
Is that the part, the partial term?
We move her from the alternate term into the vacancy for the regular position.
The one that expires next year. So there's a partial term appointment.
Yes.
She's the only alternate we have.
Yeah, we got to point alternates too.
I'm talking about, is she currently the only alternate?
Yes, the other two are vacant. Do I have a motion, sir? Motion by Councilmember Bramlett, second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Now, she, we still have two, now we have three vacancies in alternate positions. We need three alternate positions. We've, uh, we've used Almond, we've used Beck, uh, Amber Farmer is interested. And then we would still have two openings, and we would have to find someone to cover, fill them.
I move, we use Amber Farmer and leave the other two vacant until we get an application.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Bramlett to appoint Amber Farmer to one of the alternate positions.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank y'all for all of that. I know it gets somewhat confusing, because it does to me.
We still got two.
Yeah, we still have two vacancies in planning for the alternate. We still have a District Three for Parks and Rec that we need to fill. We also have a vacancy in the tree commission, but we had nobody ask for that also.
District Three, what, what area is that?
That's north. That's Bill represents that area.
Your honor, do we, do we put Donnie Hamilton on any committees?
No, but you can do so.
It just looks like in his application, he's, uh, he's open to ADDC, Historic Resources.
He doesn't live in Albemarle.
Brittany, does our policy say live in Albemarle or own a business in Albemarle? Yeah. If you're not, if you're not sure, let's just leave it open till next meeting.
He's got a New London address.
Let's look at it next meeting, because I'm, he doesn't live here, but he does have a business in Albemarle.
Well, the fact that he's got several different committees or boards he's willing to serve on, if it's, if it's, you know, we got to follow the regulation, but if you can get back to us next meeting, that'd be great.
We'll look at that for next meeting. Thank you. Moving on to ten B, consider approval of the fireworks at the Wampus Cats game, and Mr. Clark, I need to let you explain something.
Yes, sir. Um, mayor and council, uh, we carry our property liability insurance through the North Carolina League of Municipalities. Several years ago, we changed our limits on our coverage from a million to five million dollars of coverage for contractors and contracts, uh, for anything that we would have association with in terms of, uh, any liability exposure for property that's used for, uh, for any purpose. Uh, the Wampus Cats, uh, last year had requested fireworks, and we did, uh, agree to allow them to hire a company to discharge fireworks at Wascassit, after Wascassit property. Uh, my understanding is they had a million dollars of coverage, which is below our five million dollar threshold. Uh, however, the league will not cover anything, uh, which pertains to fireworks and in some cases, bounce houses. So that leaves us, uh, totally exposed to anything that could happen if someone's hurt, injured, maimed, killed, or there's damage to personal private property. So you just need to understand, mayor and council, that, um, Blake Pyrotechnic and Explosive, who is, uh, proposed to do the, the demonstration, only carries one million dollars of coverage, uh, and they would be willing to name us as an insured, but it does not meet the recommendation of five million from the league. Uh, but a, again, the league will not cover us at all. Uh, they, their recommendation is if you're going to allow the event to happen, to require them to, uh, carry five million. Um, Blake Pyrotechnic and Explosive is, uh, has expressed that they are not willing to get a policy for five million dollars because it's going to run in excess of a hundred thousand dollar premium, and they cannot get it for a single event. So it's, uh, just something I want to bring to the city council's attention, that we're not covered by the league at, uh, for, for this event, but at a minimum, you do need to at least require- at least require them to carry, uh, insurance and, uh, name the city as an additional insured.
Mr. Clark, if I may ask, I, I think this is probably the second year, I think we, I think we did this last year at the Wampus Cats game, was it the same pyrotechnic, uh, company? And what's different between this year and last year?
There's, there's nothing different in the circumstances, it's just that the, the league will not cover us. They wouldn't, had something happened last year, we would not have been covered.
Okay, alright, okay. So, premium for five million dollar premium would be a hundred thousand dollars, so all these municipalities and places that do fireworks, they?
They're probably doing about the same thing that we did last year.
Exactly.
Most of all.
Yeah, you're, you're. Taking a chance. Not that it has anything to do, how, what, I wasn't able to make it last year, what was the, what was the turnout like?
Very good, they had a very good crowd last year.
I mean, and that, and that applies to bounce, bounce houses of five million dollars?
Well, the bounce houses are not covered either, but for all other contracts, we would require five million dollars coverage and named as an additional insured.
And again, because I wasn't there last year, I'm sure we had our city fire, uh, marshal and, and fire apparatus and all at the?
Yes, sir.
At the ballgame, correct?
Right. City did everything we possibly could do to mitigate, um, risk, it's just the insurance is questioned, what level of risk you wanna take in that regard.
I move approval.
I think at this point, you, we have to, because they've already scheduled it all, we've advertised it.
We gotta have fireworks.
Yeah. Have a motion by Councilmember Bramlett to approve?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion.
I just, we're gonna have to be, be considerate on other events too, you know, because it's gonna come up again.
It's gonna be hard to vote for something, I know we're exposed on.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Two, four, two.
It's just hard for me to vote on that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Knowing that.
Alright, city manager report, Mr. Clark?
Uh, just a few items, mayor and council, uh, our Storywalk project dedication is scheduled for this Thursday, June eighteenth at ten o'clock AM at City Lake Park. Uh, our paving contractor, NJR, has finished up their contract work in just completing some punch list items on some, uh, streets around town. City crews are working on Lee Lynn Street and Melkor, and, uh, that finish, that, uh, street resourcing project will finish up all of the paving that we're doing internally this year. So we are complete in essence at the end of this week. Pickleball courts were resurfaced, the contractors finishing up work with painting and installation of nets. Our AMI project implementation has been pushed back to schedule, uh, excuse me, scheduled for July seventh for, uh, implementation, the start of that project. Uh, ballfield netting at Don Montgomery Park will be put up tomorrow. And we are replacing a water line on Pickler Street with our own city forces. Those were just the things I wanted to call to the, uh, to your attention, mayor and to the city council, that's all I have.
Thank you.
I have a, I have a question. I, I had recorded the Storywalk thing for Wednesday, you said Thursday?
You are right, it is Wednesday. Uh, today's the sixteenth, the Wednesday would be the eighteenth, I put it down wrong.
Thank you.
You called me out and got me.
I wanted, I, I wanted to congratulate whoever did that, that sounds like a great idea.
Anything else come before council? I'll entertain a motion that would go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen eleven, A three, five, and six, for consult with attorney, real estate, and personnel.
So moved, second.
Motion by Councilmember Hunt, second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.